Good evening, welcome to the city council meeting on Wednesday, November 16th, 2011. Could I have the roll call, please?
Andrea Burns.
Present.
Justin Cobb.
Present.
Ron Shatinoff.
Present.
Donald Psychowski.
Yeah.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Daniel Hagan.
Present.
Joseph McCoy.
Here.
Daniel Rist.
Here and present.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Thank you, could I have a motion for the approval of minutes of November 2nd, 2011?
Call them.
Second.
A motion of second for the approval of the minutes of November 2nd, 2011. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Okay, we have an abstention from Counselor Cobb. Moving on, public speak time. If there's anyone here to address the council from something that we don't have in the public hearing or related to appointments, please state your name and address.
Donald Emerson, East Hampton, and it's nothing new with appointments. First of all, I'm here publicly tonight to congratulate Mike on another two years as our mayor. I want to do it publicly.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. During the past two months, I've made a lot of friends and who care about as much East Hampton as I do. Mike and I, I think, have always had one common goal together. We both want the city to move forward into the future and be the best place to live, work, and play. I think we had that in common during all the campaign. We just had different ideas how to reach that goal. I would like to also thank the citizens of East Hampton for the opportunity to run for the office of mayor of this great city, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, honor. Moving on, we don't have any communications from most officials. We do have some correspondence. Counselor Rist?
We have two announcements. The first is the East Hampton/Southampton household hazardous waste collection. This will take place on Saturday, November 19th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at Whitebrook Middle School, 200 Park Street. You may remove things like pesticides, antifreeze, oven cleaner, rust inhibitors, and there's a large list. What you cannot bring are latex products, motor oil, car batteries, and there's a number of other items which they will not take. The best thing to do would be to call the planning department at (529) 1406 if you wish to find out what items you may bring that might be considered hazardous waste. Second notice is from the planning department. Public hearing notice, the planning department will hold a public hearing on November 16th to discuss proposed projects for the city's 2012 CDF Community Development Block Grant proposal. Programs are to benefit low and moderate income persons or to reduce blighted conditions. The city will consider programs including but not limited to housing rehabilitation and infrastructure improvement to the Grant Street area neighborhood. Programs are to be consistent with East Hampton's community development strategy and assist residents of East Hampton's identified target area. The public hearing will take place on Wednesday, November 16th, at 5:30 p.m. in the municipal office building, lower floor, that would be the basement. If an accommodation such as large print sign language interpreter is required, call (529) 1438 by November 8th. Well, this is a little late for that information. Anyway, please call the city planner again at (529) 1406 for further information. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Communications, Mayor Tausnich.
Just one quick thing before the mayor speaks. I just wanted to thank the American Legion for a dignified and moving ceremony at all the veterans memorials on Veterans Day, and I want to give special thanks to their motorcycle unit and their ceremonial rifle unit that went to all the monuments, and also to the East Hampton Public School Band that provided music at the Legion Hall afterwards. I just wanted to get that in, thank you.
Great, thank you. Now Mayor Tausnich, thank you.
Yeah, that was a fun event. I'm sorry, I have a couple of items that are not on your agenda. You have in front of you a request for a supplemental appropriation of $50,000. You probably are all familiar, I sent you an email regarding this request. We are preparing to remove the debris along the edge of the road here in East Hampton from the October storm. The fire chief is working with FEMA to make sure that we have a properly trained coordinator so that we may be able to seek reimbursement for this work, and I've asked the city council president to schedule a special meeting on November 30th to take this request up. Time is of the essence, we're trying to get all of the training done for the certification so that we can qualify for FEMA reimbursement and the funding in place, and all of it done before the snow hits, because it's really imperative that we get the edges of the road cleaned before snowfall. So, we're hoping that all the timing will work so that by the end of the month, we will have the money in place and the training in place so that we'll have someone who's certified to be able to manage the debris removal and to do the oversight required by the federal government so that we might request reimbursement in the future. The way the programs work from FEMA is that there's no money upfront and there's no contract or guarantee of payment, so whatever we spend, we have to spend out of pocket and then request a reimbursement. This request is accompanied by a memo and some figures from the DPW director. He and the fire chief and the highway supervisor have come up with an idea to use commercial log loaders and haulers to be able to just pick the brush off the side of the road and bring it to the storage facility off of Oliver Street where we're providing a place for all of the citizens right now to deposit their brush. And then, from that point, we'll work with FEMA to figure out how do we go forward and grind it. So this is the beginning of what will be a substantial appropriation to take care of this storm problem. We've likely spent around $70,000 in overtime already. That will have to be replaced in the budgets that it was spent from, and it's possible that the grinding will be upwards of $40,000 or $50,000. So this is the beginning of what our costs will be, and unfortunately, there's really no way to know for sure what FEMA will do. I went to a meeting that Congressman Neal had in Springfield on the same day that we had FEMA staff here in East Hampton talking to the chief and the DPW director, and they make no promises about their ability to reimburse. So it's all about getting the paperwork correct, doing the right kinds of filing, and trying to convince the federal government that these are legitimate expenditures based on a disaster. We think we'll be successful, but we can't depend upon that down the road, and we also, given Springfield's history, we don't even know how long it'll take for reimbursement, even when they approve. So it's been a little tricky. I can talk more about this when it goes to finance committee, I don't really, unless you have particular questions.
Is anyone, Counselor Psychowski?
Michael, thank you for the information, but one thing if we could, because people are calling me all the time about that, if we could get a bigger article in a paper, in both papers, in the Union and the Gazette, saying what the town is going to do for the people along the roads, and it would be a big help. I mean, a little publicity would help on this issue.
The official position is that we have the brush dump open six days a week from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for individuals to bring their private materials to the Oliver Street facility. We'll pick up whatever's on the edge of the road, assuming that everything on the edge of the road is debris from the public way.
Right, but that's what has to be explained to the people, "public way." And a lot of people don't even really know where the public way begins and ends on their property, so there's going to be quite a hassle over this, and you're going to have to be a good politician on handling that with the people.
Well, yeah, I think we'll be okay with that. I'm going to leave it up to the people on the ground to handle the brush that they encounter along the public right-of-way.
But just one other follow-up question. Is it true that Springfield is going to pick up everything, no matter what?
I have no idea what Springfield is going to do.
Through FEMA money, I mean, that's...
There's no upfront FEMA money, so...
I know there's no upfront FEMA money, you've got to collect it, but I mean, with the thing of it is, they're going to do it, and the way they're going to structure their budget, they're going to get it back from FEMA at the end, so if possible, I don't see why we don't consider doing that in long-range planning if FEMA allows you just to...
But they don't, sir. The point I'm trying to get across is that FEMA doesn't pay for clearing private property. They pay for clearing the public way.
Okay, that has to be explained to the people, all right.
And so that's kind of how we're moving forward. Communities are free, of course, if they have extra money to say that they're going to pick up people's stuff in their backyards or whatever. We don't see us being in that position, but that's the reason that the Board of Public Works chose to open the brush disposal facility free of charge for the kind of hours that they have it open, is to allow the citizens to use their forces to be able to move their private brush off of their properties. And as I said, we believe that all the brush that is laying on the side of the road is from the public way, and we will be picking that up as we go through the public way.
Okay.
It's the best I can do for your request.
You need the publicity out there for the people to understand.
We have a reporter in the field here.
One of his last articles here in East Hampton?
Another one's gone, huh?
Yeah.
That's too bad. Any additional questions for the mayor concerning the FEMA funds? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The other item that I have is surplus declaration. You are currently dealing with the 109 Park Street property, and you have in front of you tonight a formal request to offer, to declare the property surplus and to offer it for sale. So I think all the pieces are in place for your action at this point. One final thing, not that it's really critical, but that list that Counselor Rist has is available on the city's website. If you go to the calendar and click on the November 19th date of the event, attached to that event notice is a listing of the materials that can and can be brought to that household hazardous waste collection.
Zoom in.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for that information, and to sort of follow up what the mayor said, I have called a special meeting for Wednesday, November 30th at 6:00 p.m. in these chambers, and pursuant to our city council laws, you will be receiving an agenda from the city clerk within 48 hours of the meeting, but please pen in a meeting for November 30th, 6:00 p.m. so that we can address this financial shortfall concerning the brush removal.
Third or the 30th?
30th, November 30th.
Typically, they don't have anything but that item on the agenda.
Right, but just, it says in the rules you have to... Okay, move on to standing committees, Rules and Government Relations, Counselor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have an item on the public hearing for tonight, so I have no report.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, Finance Counselor Cobb, look at that.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee will next convene on October, excuse me, November 22nd, 2011, at 6:30 p.m. Conference Number 1, 50 Pace and Avenue, to basically discuss the supplemental that we heard about tonight.
Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion to send that?
I'm going to do that in business.
Public Safety, Counselor Psychowski?
No report this evening, but I'm going to have to, we're going to be scheduling a meeting shortly, I don't know exactly when.
Okay, so you don't have a time for us at this moment, right?
No.
Okay, thank you. Appointments, Counselor Winnie?
Ah, yes, I guess I'm the hot topic for tonight. At our last meeting, we withheld an appointment that the mayor had made to the Board of Health. We had an Appointment Subcommittee meeting last night convening at 5:30 at 50 Pace and Avenue to discuss, and we invited the candidates to discuss with us some questions and things that we had for them, and give the boards an opportunity to give their comments about the appointments that the mayor put forth. We met with the Board of Health with Dr. Roy, who is the chair of the Board of Health, and the health agent, Dennis La Course, last night in our meeting. Both Dr. Roy came forth with the board's backing that they felt that the appointment of Matthew Wisdom to the Board of Health was not the right fit from where their point of view was. They wanted somebody on the board that had a health background or a health and medical type of background. And so the conversation ensued. The mayor presented his side of the appointment where he felt that, he felt that an administrative person on the board would, for somehow, maybe even off the health issues to the business side of what the Board of Health deals with. With that being said, the committee voted two against the appointment and one in favor, and at this time, I will open it up to my other committee members to give their point of view as to how they feel about the vote. I was one of the people that voted against the appointment, as was Counselor McCoy, and Counselor Shatinoff was our counselor that voted in favor of the appointment.
I think what I'd like to do before we get the counselors, we had two appointments, actually three, but the Board of Health is a very important appointment. It is probably one of the most independent boards in our city. The mayor has very little say, we have very little say. Our one probably say in this is an appointment to the Board of Health, and our candidate last night could not make it, and I think it is such an important position that I would like him to have the opportunity to say a little bit and answer any questions. It may change counselors' opinions here, it may not, but I would like to give him that opportunity. So Mr. Wisdom, if you'd like to approach the podium to state your name and address, and then say what you would like to say about your point.
Hey, thank you all so much for having me. I'm Matthew Wisdom, 187 Main Street, here in East Hampton. Apologize for my voice as well, it seemed to have what everybody else has got going on. Let me give you a quick background, I'm not from here, you might be able to tell, I'm born and raised in the Texas Panhandle. Was served in the military, in the Army during the Operation Southern Watch, was discharged honorably. Degree in psychology. Over the past seven years, I have been a bank manager, first with Citizens Bank and most recently TD Bank. The reason I stepped forward and wanted to be a part of this organization is to get more involved in my community, especially in something that really seemed to matter, to make a difference. While it's true I don't have a medical background or a health background, I feel that I do bring a certain practicality and common sense to my decision-making in business. I've been successful in my role, managing several people on a day-to-day basis. Again, no medical background, but I am proficient in dissecting and digesting reports and making sound decisions as a result of what I've read. So, you know, if given this opportunity, I will serve the town well, serve my fellow board members well, and do the very best I can.
Are there any questions for Mr. Wisdom?
So I do have one. It's a little bit outfield to me, you probably don't have much of an idea, but I just kind of what comes to the top of your head. We have a farmer's market, and I believe in the past, our public health department, our health agent has not been in favor of our farmer's market, people be able to sell cheeses and I believe meats, whereas the very next community, North Hampton, does. My opinion is that if it's done correctly, it can be done safely. Do you have any opinion on how, would you be in favor of a change to allow East Hampton merchants to sell things like that?
I mean, I would want to ask if anyone has become sick as a result of the sale. You know, I mean, have there been any instances of anything rotting, any obvious signs of damage to the food? I mean, it's, I'm of the opinion that if you do it right, then it's good for the community, then of course, you have the ability to do it. I mean, I'd have to ask, I mean, the health obviously is the first issue here, you know, and those are the sort of perishable items that are easily contaminated, you know, so if there has been an issue in the past and there hasn't been a successful way to do this, then, I mean, it's definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results.
Great, thank you. Counselor Hagan?
Just a couple of questions. You were a pony to the pond committee, correct?
I believe so.
Okay, I just, I saw your name on that.
Right, right.
Would that be a time restraint of me getting too many committees, or do you feel you could fit that in?
No, sir, absolutely.
I know that one doesn't meet as frequently as maybe the health board would.
Well, it's actually, it's a big part of my business as well, being involved in the community. You know, it's so, I have the ability to go to meetings during the day as well, so, you know, it's trying to do the best I can to serve.
And also, in turn, I know you have your banking background, how about your background in the military? Did you have any, what exactly did you do in the military?
I was a Patriot missile operator.
Okay, Counselor Rist?
You mentioned you had a degree, did I hear psychology?
Yes.
That's somewhat of a healthcare background.
It is, it is, yeah, it's West Texas A&amp;M.
Is that a BA or a...
Yes, sir.
BA in that. That relieves a little bit of my concern, because psychology is something we're always dealing with, especially the psychology of those people that you might say no to.
Right, you know, the...
Restaurant owners where you shut them down because...
It also lends itself to the practicality that I spoke about, and, you know, bringing the sort of, being able to see all sides of a situation, you know, and being able to anticipate issues before they arise.
So you've heard that members of the Board of Health, current Board of Health, are not in favor of your appointment, because, not because they don't know you...
Right, right, right.
But because it doesn't say, you know, "I'm an M.D." or "I'm, you know, pharmacist" or whatever on it. How would you turn them around, do you think? How can you make that, relieve their anxiety, so to speak?
Well, you know, it's, I didn't know that I would be a successful bank manager until I became one, so, you know, it's, I think that just hopefully my presence and soundness of judgment would be able to win them over. You know, I, you know, again, I relate to people fairly well, I think, and, you know, I think given the chance, then I would be able to win their favor as well.
Thank you.
Counselor Cobb?
I don't have a question, but so, what I can do is I want to make sure that I have a comment, I'd like to wait until there's a motion on it here.
Okay, Counselor Winnie?
Yeah, Mr. Wisdom, did you get the required duties of local boards of health in Massachusetts, by any chance?
No, no, ma'am.
No, you didn't. Okay. It's, I wish you had been at the meeting last night because you would have been able to have the conversation with our present board, chair of the board, and, you know, a lot more questions and back-and-forth things could have happened, which would have given us a lot more information to make a better informed judgment. Oh, I guess that's it.
Counselor Psychowski?
Dr. Roy is here, I'd like to see him get up and hear his viewpoint, too. And I want to thank you for coming.
Any additional questions from Mr. Wisdom at this point? Okay, no, thank you very much.
Thank you all so much.
Dr. Roy, since we started, would you mind coming up and answer some questions or state some of your opinion?
Hi, Dr. Norman Roy, Chairman of Board of Health.
If you could just say for your address, too, for our records.
132 Beckett Street in East Hampton.
Any questions for Dr. Roy? Or did you want to say something first?
No, I mean, I just wanted to hear his viewpoint, because he was at the meeting and he talked, he talked to the Appointment Subcommittee, and I think he has something of substance to say, and I would like to listen to it.
Okay.
I think it's, you know, difficult to come into the situation now. Again, I just got out of the office and come in, and I hear just the tail end of the last comments. The conversations in the meeting last night, I think, addressed a lot of the issues going back and forth. Again, our concerns were the health background is not there. We went over with the meeting last night with all the requirements that are necessary to be on the Board of Health, and from the information we got, we just didn't feel that the applicant would fit those qualifications that we've been looking for. Again, there is myself on the board, there's a physician's assistant on the board, so when we do make decisions, you know, it's coming from the ramifications of a health background. If something, for example, what came up with last night's meeting, if there's a situation that involves a communicable disease, our decisions are based on that, you know, and what are the ramifications of that, you know, going future? If there's a problem with a restaurant and there's contamination issues or food issues, again, our background is coming into what are the ramifications that are going to occur? And we don't have the time to really educate other board members, whoever they may be, in the aspect of physiology, pathology, you know, contaminations, and we just don't have the time to go over that. So our decisions are based on that. Myself, also running a business in town for over 20 years, my decisions are also based on that aspect concerning what's going on in the business community. How are the decisions that are made through the Board of Health, which are far-reaching, how are they going to affect the health of the community, but how are they also going to affect the businesses of the community? So we have to kind of look at both, and I feel I have that background from that point of view. There was, I believe, I believe it was, there was a comment last night, I think it was a little misunderstanding or clarification, I believe it was, I think it was, the mayor mentioned something in regards to, you know, if another board member came on and said they didn't like a regulation, that they could change that regulation. There's no board member, you know, that can change that, because most of the regulations that we are under are state-mandated. So even if we don't like it, we can't make that decision. We have to follow the regulations and the guidelines and the statutes that we're under to make our decisions. So based on, you know, our meeting last night is, the Board of Health just feels that this is not the best candidate at this point. Again, nothing against them personally or, you know, anything at that point, so please don't take it that way. We're looking from, you know, our paradigm, and our recommendation is to not accept this candidate.
Okay, I have a couple of questions for you. I guess it's fair, I'll give you the cheese question. Well, I was curious, why is it that our Board of Health feels that it would be unsafe for people to sell cheeses or meats at our farmer's market where our very next community and several communities seem to be able to do it successfully?
Okay, that is a question that is best handled by the agent. I did ask him to be here tonight to answer any specific questions, and he must have got tied up at his other meeting, okay? But again, to answer the question, there are guidelines that we have to follow, the agent has to follow. There are requirements as far as handling the food, there are requirements as far as the temperature of the foods, there is the requirements as far as the receptacle the food is in. There's a lot of requirements that have to be found. Now, if it turns out that other surrounding towns are in fact saying, "Hey, there's no problem," then what, I can't really speak for them, but possibly the health agent of that community is not checking them. You know, our health agent is very thorough, and he will check and make sure.
So again, pardon my ignorance on some of these things, so essentially, the board sets the policy and the health agent, you know, does them. Am I correct, it sounds like you must make it sound like the health agent tells you sort of what needs to be done? I'm confused as the change of power here.
Well, there's a whole, again, the statute of regulations are set as far as what the board can do and as far as what the health agent does, so we're not, you know, changing that way.
Yeah, I guess I'm talking about those ones where it's not set by state statute, such as the ability to sell farm products at farmer's markets and things like that.
Right, so if that is there, if there are farmer markets that are their regulations, then yes, they are in effect have to be followed. Now, the individual community, we can make policy changes, not regulation changes. Policy changes can be made. For example, if there's a farmer's market, to have the farmer's people participating, to have them actually follow the same requirements of safe handling, you know, considerations and regulations that other people would have to do.
Counselor Psychowski?
Dr. Roy, if I'm right in listening to you, every decision that the Board of Health makes is under state statute, right? The state statute is always there when you're making these regulations for the town, right? Or am I mixing that up somehow?
In regards to, I'm not sure I'm following where the question is going.
I'm finding something besides cheese to talk about.
Okay. Decisions that are made are based on our regulations.
Right, thank you.
I mean, what else, the question, Counselor Burns?
How long has this vacancy been, how long has this seat been vacant on the board?
I believe it has been several months.
Several months.
I believe that that was addressed last night, and I don't remember the actual time.
I think it's been open since April.
April.
And you don't feel that since April, April, May, June, July, August, September, October, then in those eight months, that you would have benefited from another person's point of view on your board?
Well, we have been searching and looking, and other people have been coming in and checking out, other people have come into the boards and said they would like to participate, and they were attending our meetings. A couple of those were nurses who were actually attending our meetings, and they wanted to be interested in Board of Health, but their schedule changed, and they were unable to do it. So it hasn't been like, okay, let's not look for anybody, let's not consider anybody, let's keep it a two-person board. No, it is not. It always was and will be a three-person board. So we have been actively looking, and people have been approaching us, and we are following up with them also.
I guess that wasn't, that's not really what I'm implying, it's more like, would the input of another person who may have different skills have been beneficial to you during this last... you during this last period of time, regardless of the background?
Okay.
I guess that's what I'm...
I would say if it was a health-related background, then obviously the input would be beneficial. If there was no health background involved or no knowledge of public health, then, again, we would find ourselves doing a lot more educating and explaining and training a new member.
But even when you were, when you were asked about the regulations around meat or cheese or that, you deferred to the health agent. So these are things that are set as Counselor Psychoski said, they're set already, correct? So there wouldn't be a lot of educating. So those are things that you didn't necessarily know, but that you would have to check the state laws.
Oh, in that respect.
Or check with your health agent, and they're not necessarily things that everyone is familiar with and would have to become educated about.
Educated in the policies and regulations, yes. But for example, if someone, for example, a restaurant had to be closed down for whatever reason. And our part is to go over what is wrong that is found with the restaurant as an example. And then it's our job to more or less educate the restaurant owner as to why these policies are there, what is so involved with the cleanliness, what is so involved with the food, what is so involved with temperatures, what would happen if someone got sick, what would happen if this continued on, you know, what would happen if sickness got out into the community. Those aspects that are involved in the decision-making are not through regulation, they are not through policy, they are through knowledge of health and disease. And that comes through our background and our personal training. So that's what this board is bringing to this community, which I think is very rare in one way. Now, a lot of surrounding towns do have health-related people on their boards of health. But we are bringing basically the education and the health aspect to help ensure the health of the community, not just make it a policy board, not make it a regulatory board. It's making it a health board. And the only way that can be done is if the people on the board have a health background and understand the process of health and disease. That is the only way.
Actually, again, just, because I learned a lot about the Board of Health in the last 24 hours. And one of the things is, I assume that the, because as you know, our health agent is going to be leaving in December, I assume that we would be able to interview that new health agent. This is not. This is something the board appoints, so that's something also to consider, that this is kind of our chance if we want to have kind of input indirectly by any means in who that health agent might be, because otherwise, you know, because it's separate from politics, it is out of our hands. Just want to make, it's something I learned I want to share with anybody. Counselor Hagan, did you have a question?
No, no, not yet, actually.
Okay. Counselor Winn?
Mr. Wisdom was up here. I don't know if, I don't think you were here when he was going over his background.
No, I was not.
But he did say that he has a bachelor's degree in psychology. And I know that the Health Department deals with a lot of issues of people with psychological disorders which bring about health disorders. Do you think maybe that that you might find helpful?
Psychological background would be helpful, but again, I think the psychological background backed with the physical aspect of health and disease and the processes of.
Questions.
And again, then you're back dealing with disease, pathology, microbiology. You start involved with these aspects, because this is where the decisions are made. It's not simply, oh, let's do this. It's a very well-thought-out program. And both, I can't speak for, you know, my other member, but myself, yes, we are trained in psychology and all the emotional mental aspects of health also. So that is a heavy background that we have. And personally, that's the heavy background that I do have. So we're bringing the psychological aspect with the physical aspect to all our decisions.
Counselor Wiss.
This may seem a little blunt. I have not been happy with the inconsistent application of Mr. Lacrosse's inspection policies. Maybe it's his people's skills as much as his consistent application of regulation. And I know that there is room for interpretation when it comes to certain, his authority. And I'm wondering, does the Board of Health have direct authority over the health inspector such that they could overturn, for instance, in an extreme situation, an action by the health inspector if they deemed it to be inconsistent with regulation or with other application?
Okay, there has been times in the past, too, when the health agent has done an inspection or gave a recommendation, and based on that, he gives his opinion to the board and he makes the recommendations. We don't just automatically go with that.
Oh, so you have that authority.
Many times, we will overturn the health agent.
So what I'm getting at is, and Mr. Wisdom has given me some feeling that his ability, he is a manager of people. And being a manager of people, he hears that and is able to, I would hope, and I'm saying this directly to you, sir, if you happen to be the person, that the application of regulation and the inconsistent inspection services that we, I hope, will get from the future health inspector, I believe the Board of Health has a huge responsibility there, which has a lot to do with the health regulations, but it also has to do with how you manage people and how you deal with the residents in the community. And I believe that perhaps, and I'm on the fence, I have to admit it, that a man of Mr. Wisdom's capabilities might offer that, might be able to offer a sense of what managing people is like, because he manages a large group of people in a business. And I think that's something that just came to me, that you're managing a health inspector, and I'd like to see that inspection service be more consistent, more people-friendly, even though you have to give them very difficult decisions sometimes and oftentimes unfavorable decisions. It can be done in a way that I think treats people with a little more respect, to be honest with you.
Okay.
So I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to go over this forever, but I'm thinking that a person who's able to manage might have something to bring to the table there.
Okay.
Okay, that's my opinion on that.
In regards or in response to that, too, the inconsistencies you're talking about, I would actually have to know a little bit more what you're referring to, because that would be maybe a better chance for me to respond to that. Also, this is not the place where that we're talking about.
No.
An applicant. As far as any inconsistencies that we have seen, I don't see any there. Basically, there is a lot of different jobs and different situations that the health agent has been placed upon and to do a lot more. At the same time, there's been times when we have had no one working in the office from the secretarial aspect either. The hours are consistently cut down. As they are cut down, it's the health agent's job to take over and do that. And then when the hours are cut down even more the following year, the health agent has to do more of that. And then when the following year he's taken out of the budget, we still have to do more of that. So now we're down to about a four-hour-a-week help in the office. That extra time, a lot of that is taken up by the health agent. So if he's doing the office work and has to do this, what is happening to the time out here in the field?
Mr. President.
It's being down.
Yes, I'm sorry, Counselor.
Or this discussion is really not germane to the appointment.
That's true.
Okay, so I guess...
That's true. I was just taking a...
Can I have one quick question?
Yes, Counselor, I just want to make him quick questions, Counselor Psychoski.
I heard, well, I hate to say this, I already got criticized for using the word grapevine. I'd heard Dennis is considering retirement at the first of the year that he put, is considering putting his papers in, is running through.
His papers have been submitted. It is true.
Okay, so...
Yeah, I mentioned that earlier, Counselor.
That's fine.
I just wanted to make, I didn't hear you, Joe.
Okay, no problem. Counselor Hagan.
The sound in here is terrible.
Yeah.
For us older people.
Dr. Roy, obviously, I wasn't at the meeting last night, and I'm trying to get around, and I wasn't on the council when you were appointed. I believe you're a doctor of chiropractic medicine, and I'm not sure what the qualifications of the third board member are, and I'm trying to wrap around how yourself and the third board member and Mr. Wisdom might all get together. Do you know the qualifications of the other? What is it, is she, is it a...
She's a nurse with a bachelor's and a master's, and she's a physician's assistant.
That's what I said. I didn't know her.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for Dr. Roy?
Welcome, Mayor.
Okay, not being, thank you very much for your time. I believe the mayor would like to make a quick comment as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
I just repeat what I said last night. I think that Mr. Wisdom brings a certain roundness to the board. It is consistent with the historic appointment on this board. There's always been a third member who was not from the public health field to provide that input. The last was Kip Hines, his predecessor was Jack Raymond. They don't have a health background at all. And we, I believe that we'll get more rounded decisions if we have different aspects, different people with different aspects looking at issues. And so I support Mr. Wisdom's appointment as obvious since I submitted him to you, and I hope that you approve this appointment.
Okay. Counselor Winn?
I did ask, I did ask the health inspector about the two other appointments that were non-health-related. The two other people that served on the board had engineering backgrounds, which the health board found very helpful, especially with water retention, mosquitoes, things like that, sewage, dealing with things like that. The engineering piece of it was very helpful for them. Although they did say that now that James Gracia is the engineer for the city, they work hand-in-hand now on developing retention ponds underground so that they don't have them above ground because of mosquitoes and the diseases that are coming that way from there. And then now that ninety, did he say ninety-five percent of the houses now are on the sewage system now.
City sewer.
Instead of the septic system. So that little piece of it has declined. But that was the background of the two other people that were on the health board that were non-related, quote-unquote, "health" individuals.
Thank you, Joyce.
To give you that.
Now, did you want to make a motion and have, because I would like to hear, for those councils who would like to, if they want to summarize their opinions, we can do it before the motion, or once the motion is on the table?
I'll sum right my opinion if you want right now.
Okay, why don't we hear it, Counselor Psychoski?
Okay. I think that that gentleman there could serve on another board with no problem. But after listening to Dr. Roy's concern, looking at this board and looking at myself, I don't have a mirror, so I can't do it. I don't think anyone, maybe, oh, maybe you, Joe, with your veterinarian degree could practice medicine. I mean, I know the rest of us can't. I mean, I try to treat myself all the time at the drugstore, and I don't do too well. So I want to go with the experience of Dr. Roy and what Dr. Roy said. No hard feelings to that gentleman, because I think he'd be a hell of a candidate on another board. And I have had my little disagreements with the Board of Health and Dennis, but all in all, I found Dennis to be a hell of a nice guy. He's a softie at heart, and if you talk to him, he'll always come to a good compromise for the community and for you.
Thank you.
So I'm, I'm going to vote no.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? I will comment. I actually am going to change my vote tonight for a couple of reasons. I, after hearing more, I kind of got the impression, I think we do have a disconnect from the board, from the public health agent, that I, to me, became, in my opinion, is my, how I observe this, a little more obvious to me. And I think maybe that is what we need, is a person who brings more management skills to that position than health skills. We already have two health people, and yes, it's a three-person board, and there's always the risk you could have a two-person board. But I am confident with his presentation, his management skills. I think, I've changed my vote, that I think I am going to vote in favor. I think he, I've become convinced that that's maybe a skill that we need on the board, more so than additional health. Anybody else? Counselor Shetanov?
I'd like to point out with the health inspector or the health agent retiring, that the board is going to be faced with hiring a replacement. And I think it's much healthier for the board to have three active members during that process. And I can't see, based on the history of the board and the previous boards, why we would turn down a viable applicant who is willing to serve and do the work based on a vacancy that's been for, I believe it's beyond April. It's been, you know, a longstanding opening. So to turn down a viable candidate when, on the hope that someone from the medical background is going to come forward, when multiple people have come forward from the medical background and not been able to make the commitment, to me seems unsound. So I would just urge people to consider that and vote in favor of this.
Counselor Wiss?
I, too, was coming in believing, as Dr. Roy, that we definitely needed a health professional. But I've been turned around on, for two reasons. One, eight months is a long time to have a two-person Board of Health. I did not realize that was the case. And I also believe that, having heard the mayor, that having had candidates in the past who have not had health experience, knowing some of them, I don't believe our Board of Health in the past has made terrible decisions. I believe also by having two candidates on the board who are our health professionals and doing a good job in that matter, they will educate Mr. Wisdom, as well as if Mr. Wisdom decides to say no to something that they really strongly believe in, they've got two healthcare-related votes. So I'm not concerned about that. I do believe that management skill is necessary, because I do believe that we need to be careful not how, what the regulations are or what policies are made as much as how we present ourselves to the public when making difficult inspection decisions, whether they be building inspection, health inspection, anything like that, because that's one of the major complaints we keep hearing. And it may be false, but inconsistent application of inspection. So I believe having Mr. Wisdom with his management experience could bring something to the table. So I, too, have changed my mind on this.
Any other comments?
Just one, one quick comment. Again, I've never met Mr. Wisdom till tonight. He impressed me with being a person I think would listen. And again, I take a lot of what Dr. Roy says also, that your health background is important. But Mr. Wisdom just said it's probably unfair in a five-minute speech. He just strikes me as a person. I think that if, he would be certainly a listener as well as a decision-maker. And I think having someone with an administrative and business background might help when you have to go into businesses like restaurants or that and explain, you know, why something has to be done or why it does. And I think maybe having that business aspect on the board would be helpful, so.
Okay, any more comments? Okay.
So Counselor Derby? I just want to, I was just going to ask Counselor Winn, how many applicants we've had in this eight months for this position?
The mayor has not brought any to us.
Okay.
I don't know if he got any applications and didn't bring them to us. I don't know.
So for me, I mean, for me, that's telling. On a three-person board, having a member absent for eight months is, I feel is unacceptable. And if we have a viable person to fill the position, and nobody's mentioned, you know, I think maybe Mr. Wisdom didn't want to sell himself too hard, but, you know, someone who was in the army, someone who's a vet, definitely had to make difficult decisions, definitely had to face challenges that maybe weren't, you know, the answer wasn't readily apparent. And I think that could also bring a depth and breadth to the position that we might not even be able to anticipate. So, you know, from my perspective, I think that also adds to it, as well as a psychology background. So, you know, I'm in favor of this.
I think I'll entertain a motion, Counselor.
I make the motion in the positive to appoint Matthew Wisdom to the Board of Health with the term expiration of December 31st, 2014.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for appointment of Matthew Wisdom. Counselor Cobb.
I prefer to keep my comments, basically, after the motion. What I see is this, is actually, you did present well. To me, I'm quite convinced that you have the skill set to learn. Still keeps the board a very professional board. I also look at, from the documentation, and I see that Counselor Extemi has, it's clear that that was generated somewhere, that there's a lot of code issues involved here, a lot of statute involved here, and that I cannot believe that the Division of Local Services doesn't offer some type of training or some type of help, because every community is going to have this problem. We're lucky to actually have a volunteer to step forward in a very, what can be a very contentious, a very hard board to serve on, a very important board to serve on. So I'm more actively going to support your nomination, and the gun now has been thrown down, looking at the way people talk tonight, for you to step up to this challenge and prove us right.
Okay, we have a motion. Any additional last minute comments? Are we ready to take a vote? Okay, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Two? Okay, abstains? Okay, I believe the motion still passes. Due to the importance of this, we did go past our time for opening our public hearings, so I'm going to go back to that, and then we'll finish up that last appointment. Could I have a motion to open the public hearings, please?
No, no.
A motion in a second to open the public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion passes. Counselor Derby, I believe, is...
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. So what we have here is a proposed change to the administrative code, which would basically establish a procedure to ensure that people who wanted to participate on a multi-member board would be appropriately informed of the... on a multi-member board would be appropriately informed of the rules and would also allow us to keep a track, a record of those people who are on those boards. And I think, I believe that, you know, part of this would be them taking the ethics test that all of us had to take as well. So that's kind of the introduction. If anybody has any questions or comments.
I guess I'll go right to the public then. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council concerning this issue? Please come to this podium, state your name, Mayor Tosnick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I presented this to you to address an issue that came up sort of out of a conflict of interest concern that was lodged by a subcommittee of a committee, that we really didn't know who they were and they never really got informed about what the conflict of interest laws are and what the responsibilities are when you're in a public agency. So I spoke at length with the city clerk and we came up together with this proposal. And so I think Barbara is very comfortable with the language that's in it, that she believes it fits well. We tried to make sure that it wasn't onerous because these subcommittees are generally loosely appointed. But someone should keep track of who they are and the city clerk should be informed of who they are so that they can be informed about what their responsibilities are, not from the point of view of serving the board that appointed them, but from the point of view of serving as a public officer. And so we think that this is pretty straightforward, pretty easy to follow and that it should cure the ailment that exists out there for people who volunteer to do very wonderful things and are just, and I don't want to say, I don't want to say blindsided, but that are unaware that there are certain codes and requirements that being a public servant kind of forces upon them.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who would like to address the council concerning this administrative code change? Okay, not being seen, Counsel Derby.
I'll actually defer to Counsel Rist.
Because you didn't copy Barbara's email?
You have it in your hands. Unless you want to pass it over.
I move that the City Council approve Administrative Code 11-1, which establishes a procedure for ensuring that persons appointed by multi-member bodies are informed of the rules applicable to their service and that the city has an accurate record of those appointments.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to the previously just read, read change to the administrative code. An additional discussion? Counsel Skakowski.
This is a good housekeeping procedure that's well overdue.
Again, I think.
I was on that committee.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's kind of.
Nobody knew who I was.
I think it's good to codify some of this because I know our city clerk is very good at making sure a lot of people, but occasionally things fall through the cracks. And I think this is a right, a nice way to have it, you know, written so people would be aware of it. So. Any further, was there a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
Move the public hearings to close.
Second. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Moving back to Counsel Winnie and appointments.
Hi, thank you. All right, the second, the second appointment that we reviewed was for the planning board. And Mr. David Gardner, who was the mayoral appointment, was at the table with us last night. Many questions were asked of Mr. Gardner. And at the end of the meeting, when the committee took their vote, they voted three to zero in favor of the appointment of Mr. Gardner to the planning board. The appointment is for one year. It fills the position of Ed Quinn, who came off the committee of the planning board. And with that being said, the appointments, Subcommittee also took into consideration that Ann Perizzo, who is the chair, is conceivably looking at not coming on for her reappointment at the end of her term. And that our newly-elected counselor, Mr. Oklevitz, will, well, he indicated to us last night that he will stay on the planning board until they can transition over or they can find an applicant to come forward to take his position. But he was more than willing to stay on the planning board until such time that the transition can be made for somebody to come on and take his place so that he, the board wouldn't be stammered. So with that being said, Mr. Sekleki and Mr. Schuman both, from what I heard from.
The mayor.
The mayor?
Yep.
Yeah, from what I heard from the mayor, and he can talk to that, said that they really had no issues with Mr. Gardner coming on the planning board through the mayor. So that's where we were with that.
Okay, thank you. So if there's anyone here from the public who would like to address the council concerning, I'm still in public hearing mode, but if there are, because we're allowing for these appointments to allow the public to speak on them, if there's anyone here who would like to speak to the appointment of Mr. Gardner, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Okay, not being seen. Well, I guess we'll go back to you, Counsel Winnie.
Thank you. I will make the appointment in the affirmative. Motion to appoint David Gardner to the planning board with the term expiration of December 31st, 2012.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for appointment of David Gardner to the planning board. Additional comments? Counsel Rist.
Well, I'd like to comment. Thank you, Counsel McCoy, for updating me on the appointments committee's meeting. I know there was opposition to Mr. Gardner's appointment presented at the meeting. I also know that Mr. Gardner has a history, unfortunately, of controversy with regard to his relationship with the business community through his membership on the zoning board of appeals, his working through the sign ordinance situation, which, but I also want to say that I believe Mr. Gardner has a great deal of intelligence, is very detailed in his research on any subject, which is both well for anyone who's going to be on a board. My concern is that there is a perception, and maybe it isn't just a perception, but it is a truth, that Mr. Gardner is presented as anti-business. I have received numerous phone calls asking me to oppose this. On the other hand, Mr. Gardner is going to be on the planning board for only one year. And having a planning board with only four members would allow us, as I believe the mayor informed the committee last night, and correct me if I'm wrong, if there's less than four members, then the applicants get to do their proposal by right instead of going through a special permit process, which allows residents and the community to look at every application. This is dangerous and there's not a lot of people wanting to be on such an important, but very controversial board. Every time we have a controversial situation such as Stop and Shop, Department Street housing issue, we seem to lose members because it's hard. Mr. Gardner's demonstrated a thick skin. He can handle the sometimes abusive statements by those who disagree with him. On the other hand, I can say this. This is a probationary appointment for me. After one year, if there are a lot of complaints that Mr. Gardner does not come in with an objective point of view, that he does not show at least an application of the rules of planning, of our zoning regulations, which I wish the planning board would be more consistent with too, but that's another subject, then he will not get my vote for next year. But I've turned myself around and I'm going to have to explain myself to numbers of the business community that were opposed to it because I was opposed except over those two aspects. It's a year. We have time. He can turn himself around and this, the statement that he's anti-business, maybe it's not true and he can prove himself. And number two, the fact that we need members on this board or applicants will get their applications approved by right without the permit process, which allows the residents to have a great deal to say about how our community is planned and developed. So for those two reasons, I will support this application this evening.
Thank you. Additional comments? Counsel Skakowski.
I have only one question. I think the mayor's going to have to answer it because I asked Joyce and she didn't know. Was there any other people that applied for that position on the planning board?
We do have a motion on the table, but I.
He said no.
He took his head and off.
He said no.
I heard there was two, so.
Additional comments? Counsel Cobb.
I'll speak lightly. I'm going to echo off of Counsel Rist's concerns. I too have received calls and comments, but they are not, in my mind, strong enough to overcome my deference to the vote of the committee. I will support your nomination to this, this position this time around.
Counsel, Counsel Runt Shatunov.
I would just like to say that having gone through the difficulty of the sign ordinance with the ordinance Subcommittee and Mr. Gardner's participation throughout the whole process, that a lot of the sentiment that's being echoed is being unfairly pinned to Mr. Gardner. And that through those proceedings, Mr. Gardner was civil, polite, and never deviated from what the matters at hand were. And so I think it's, people should know that his performance does not merit some of the comments that have been made and leveled.
Counsel Winnie.
My two cents is, four cents, five cents, whatever. The sign ordinance was voted on by the City Council. It was accepted. There are flaws and we will address them as they come up, just like any document that's put forth in the City Council. I think that I echo Counsel Shatunov's concerns. And I tried to, in last night's meeting, I really tried to bring everybody to a point where the past is the past. We're moving forward. We're all moving forward as a city. We all have the same goals and objectives. And that might be silly la-la land, but it's, to me, I think it's a, it's a attainable goal. And I think that all of us, all of us here, sitting here, are all working for that goal. And with that being said, I had a conversation with Pat Brow and I've had a conversation with some of the other chamber members who actually came around and saw my point of view. And they're very willing to move forward and give this a try and see how it works out. The one thing I can say about Mr. Gardner is that he is very detail-oriented. And he dots his i's and crosses his t's and he follows the book as the book is written. And I think that might be probably a good thing on the planning board. So with that being said, you all know that I'm going to support his nomination.
Counsel Derby.
I was part of the sign committee. And you know, and what's talking about.
Situation.
Situation, I guess is how it was referred to.
Sorry, I couldn't find the right word.
That's okay. You know, and my impression of Mr. Gardner was that he's someone that is intelligent and someone who is one to work hard and was extremely passionate about what he believed. So, and I think those are all good things to bring to the planning board. I'm very concerned if we don't have the four members to, that, that concerns me deeply. But, and you know, but I think what Counsel Winnie is saying is the moving forward, I think I would like to see over the next year, I'm moving forward, you know, and I'm hoping that on the planning board, we can keep things moving forward and have a collegial atmosphere for things to get done and city business to be done. And I'm hoping that that will happen. So I'm in support of this.
Counsel Hagan.
Just a quick comment. I know one of our appointments that we have authority over, Mr. Gardner applied for, and I thought everyone that went to that for the Board of Assessors was very impressed with the way he conducted himself during those hearings. And I think everyone that was on that appointments committee, and I wasn't on it, I mean, the appointments committee obviously can comment if they want, but everyone thought both candidates were great candidates. I never heard anything negative and certainly I'll support his appointment tonight. But, you know, I guess I'd like to support it with, with a positive spin as opposed to, and again, with all due respect to Counsel Rist, I mean, I don't like to say somebody's appointed on probation. I mean, I think Mr. Gardner's appointed, he's appointed, and a year from now, we look at the appointment. Again, no, that's just.
Yeah, I.
I will move the appointment.
Counsel Cobb.
Since you have a motion before, I'm going to say this motion, but I'm going to look this way. Because we have vacancies and we have volunteers, in this particular case, UMass Extension Services offers Level One and Level Two training for members of the planning board that are looking to come forward and want to know what it's all about. That's something we can use, we can utilize to help out members who are not 100% up to speed, to actually come up to speed, to provide a more professional board.
Counsel Kosk, would you mind removing your motion just so I can make a comment? I mean, he made a motion to move the question.
Yeah, you want to make a comment, go right ahead.
If you don't mind. I just, I also will be voting in favor of Counsel Gardner, I mean Counsel, David Gardner for the, the planning board. For a couple of reasons. I also was part of the sign situation. And I found, again, he was professional and did, showed a thick skin, very hard worker. He is one of our citizens who has not applied for one city position, but three, actually, at this point. He wanted to be on the charter commission. He asked to be an assessor. And here, so I think he's a model in that respect as far as being wanted to be involved. He has an attention to detail that I think, I also agree with, some of the councils echoed our planning department needs. And I did make some comments to him, you know, I'm not a psychologist. But I did make some comments that I, what I thought might improve his position, his success. That was between Mr. Gardner and myself, but I would certainly be in favor of this position as well.
Move the question, please.
So Counsel Winnie, why don't you? We have, it's already.
I already moved it.
Okay, so anyway, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
The third, the third position is, I will make this in the form of a motion. It was discussed at the Appointments Subcommittee last night and passed three to zero in favor of. I make the motion that we appoint Bonnie Johnson to the ECA Plus Cultural Council with the term of expiration of December 31st, 2012.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to appointment of Bonnie Johnson to the ECA Plus Cultural Council. Any, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Thank you. Is that the end of your report? Or do you have a meeting to announce?
Yes, our next meeting will be at 5:45, Council Chambers, on December 7th. Our next council meeting for the three, two appointments that are coming up in new business.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ordinance, Counsel Shatunov.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion for a 90-day extension on the request from Counsel Cobb regarding special permitting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for a 90-day extension for the request for a special permitting process. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
I conclude my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Property, Counsel Cobb.
Thank you. Before us tonight, we have two measures that we'd like to actually end up voting on. I'm going to start in order. The first concerns the disposal requirements, 152, 154 Everett Street. There's a brief background here I'd like to get at. And I'll state it this way, when I first became a counselor eight years ago, was just about when we were taking tax titleless property. It was basically in the year 2004. So this is a property that has been fouled since that point. We have actually, at that point, when we took a claim of it, there was a back taxes of around $85,000, $89,000 due to the city that are still left on claim. On top of that, we have used CPA funds, led around $35,000 to augment grant money we got to clean up this property and to move it forward. The property committee that I was on, early on at that time, developed a strategy that was put forth in RFP that had failed. And that's why we're at this point, to review that strategy. So to say the housing market has changed. That was, in my opinion, an accurate strategy when the housing market was booming. It no longer is. And so we have, in my opinion, we have to rethink this. There are some things to consider here and that I also looked at and we considered in our deliberations that the master plan and the housing production plan, all of that fits in putting what we call affordable units on this property. And when we came to vote, we decided that we would go with four owner-occupied, that's not homeownership, owner-occupied affordable units for this property. And I'll open it up for discussion or questions.
Tell them about the vote, win.
Okay, the vote was two to one in favor of the motion I'm going to put forward of disposing of this property, basically for the four units and basically the minimum sale price of just $1.
Okay, Counsel Skakowski.
Do you want my minority report now or should I wait?
You are welcome to state that.
Do you want me to start now?
You can if you would like.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna do it, just like Letterman. One through seventeen, I'm not stopping at ten, okay? Number one, historically in this town, all tax titles, tax title property was always auctioned off. Number two, Parsons Village was not on the horizon at the time when this was done eight years ago. At that time, eight years ago, I believe I descended at that vote with, uh, J.P. Kozinski and Councillor Cobb, I wanted to go to a tax title sale at that time. I can't remember correctly. Nonprofits had their chance, but they didn't take it. They had a chance to bid on it when we had a, a price. Somebody came up with the idea of giving it away for a dollar, okay? I don't know that I can afford it. We are elected to make sure the taxpayers are getting the best they can for the tax dollars they spend. Uh, if the property is worth in an excess of a hundred thousand dollars with no restrictions, and, uh, it with four units, each unit for a small kind of development, I checked with two realtors today, they usually for land cost of thirty-five thousand dollars a unit. So, that would bring that piece of property up to about a hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of value, whether you receive that or not, but I mean, it's worth in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. And the other thing about, uh, okay, we're getting, also, we're gonna get into the Parsons, Parsons School rumor that someday that might be declared surplus, and that might become affordable housing too. So, that has to be into the equation. Down there on East Street, on the other side of the Tri-County Building, I don't know the name of, uh, the apartment building, there's ten units of affordable housing there. So, if you look at it that way, ten units there, thirty-eight to forty of Parsons Village, if it goes, uh, yeah, thirty-eight to forty, let's, let's run that off to, to fifty, and this is fifty-four, then if the Parsons School comes in, how much more can that neighborhood absorb, absorb with that? Wait a minute here. Okay. The master plan doesn't say anything about overloading an area with affordable housing, as far as I could find out. Okay, now, about the ten percent in this community, that they say we have to reach for the affordability issue, that's the state, the state statute, okay? If you don't, if you don't reach the, the ten percent, nothing's gonna hurt you, and it's also an infinite number. Say if you're at eight point five percent and you have a building boom of condos and stuff like that, your percentage goes down, so the number is always gonna be infinite. So, you have, you have to take that. Okay, next page. Try to make it close. One thing we have to consider, we have affordable rent in this city, whether we'd like to admit it or not. We have a lot of Section Eight certificates that we can't count in this city, because they're issued from another, the way the state sets them up, where the issuing is. What the hell did I write here? Oh, Habitat had a, had a piece of property on Ferry Street that was given to them. Habitat didn't use it. Habitat gave it back. That was a piece from Vinnie Lapine, by Vinnie Lapine's project, you know, you know what? I think Councillor Cobb knows where that is. And my last one, I'd like to invoke the council rule to suspend a vote on this for two weeks.
I'd like to continue the, he has that right.
He has that right.
But, we can continue the public hearing and allow Jackie to give a comment and for other councillors to give a comment, and then we won't vote on it tonight because of Mr. Saikowski.
Quite, quite all right, I'm glad you are, George.
I, I have the rebuttal.
Okay, um-
Excuse me. Is this a public, is this a public hearing?
No, this isn't a, a public hearing. I mean, I mean, we did open it up, and, and if it is, it is controversial enough, and people want-
No, I just asked.
Yeah, you're right, it's not set up, these, these Subcommittee hearings are not set up a public hearing, but for me, the more information to, for councillors to make decisions, I'm in favor of, so-
We always allow, uh, persons who are employed by the city or acting in committees-
I have no problem, I just-
No, and I'm, I'm not opening to the public.
It was just your reference that it was a public hearing.
No, I wanted, I wanted, I, I shouldn't have used the word "public." I, I meant the Housing Authority and the planner, people who have-
Mm-hmm.
We hired-
Right, I have no problem.
-volunteers to help us. Am I allowed to have the floor?
Yeah, would you like, you would like to speak before we ask anyone?
Well, I know that she would like to defend it, but Councillor Cobb?
I have a couple. Well, I have a couple too, so.
Okay, well, why don't you, Councillor Rist, why don't you go first, then?
This has been in tax title and on the rolls for eight years. We have attempted to sell it. We weren't able to sell it to a for-profit developer, probably because, A, the land was too expensive, and B, because the request, I think it was for twenty-five percent affordability on six units or something like that, was not profitable. If it was able to be purchased by a nonprofit, they would've tried it, but they could not afford that. Habitat for Humanity is very interested in the site if it's, if they don't pay for the land, because they can get volunteers for construction, making the construction of the homes, the demolition of the home that's there, or whatever is there, I forget, is it a home? Anyway, that can be done at low cost. Habitat for Humanity then would proceed if they were, I should qualify this, we're opening up to any nonprofit with a dollar as the minimum bid, somebody could outbid each other, you know, a hundred dollars, whatever, but by doing that, we completely can, we stay in control of what they can do. And Habitat for Humanity would build four affordable units on this site. The CPA paid for the brownfield, uh, removal, the, um, toxic removal, in effort, in an effort to provide us with the possibility of affordable housing on the site. If a private developer was to purchase this land, I believe by state statute, that money would have to be returned by the developer to the CPA, because it no longer was affordable. I am a strong proponent of affordable housing, and there's a couple of things. The Parsons Street issue is now in forty-B, or maybe, we don't even know if that's there, and it may not come. Number two, we don't have a lot of land in this city that's available for this kind of construction, even though a lot of it is in that area. Number three, uh, the new city residents which Councillor Cobb represents have no problem with four units in this area, so they do not have an objection, which is important, and I think Councillor Cobb will address that. And I would like to open the door, after Councillor Cobb's comments, to, uh, Jackie, who is from the Housing Authority, to defend why this would be a good use of this, uh, land. So, I'm, I'm a Councillor Cobb first.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd like to start with this. Way back when, when we first took this property by tax title, if we decided to auction it off to highest bidder, that would've been the time to do it, before we put any money into it. Uh, to me, the issue is, we've reached a point, in my perspective, in the term I use, it's, uh, we've come to a point where it's time to cut bait and move on. We actually need to get this property to be productive property, and actually start earning us some money, rather than costing us money. The, uh, benefit here is that in the housing production plan, this type of parcel, foul property, city has control over, is the type of property that is considered ideal for affordable home. The neighborhood association supports it because it's owner-occupied in the motion affordable homes, and, uh, the one dollar doesn't mean it's gonna go to a nonprofit. It's one dollar. It could go to anybody who's willing to come up with that price, and that's just the minimum price, or, or even a higher price to build those four affordable units, so there's some options there still. And, uh, that said, because of that level of control, we can also reduce the potential density. We were to sell this outright, uh, to the market, we have no idea what's gonna be built there, whether it's one, four, or six units that are allowed by the zoning. So, this is different than the actual sixty-nine Parsons Street, it is actually apples and oranges, and because of the underlying, uh, control and zoning that we have. So, because of that, this meets a number of strategies. It also meets a strategy and a goal in our master plan, which is towards the development of five affordable owner-occupied units per year, something we haven't achieved yet. And with this, and this property, if it's successful, we find a successful bidder, and , uh, the units going up on East Street, I'm hoping that in two thousand and twelve, we at least satisfy that one little goal. That's a step forward. That said, uh, I wanna point out that the vote on this motion, uh, does require a two-thirds vote of the council in order to pass. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone here from the council before I call, Councillor Saikowski?
I just, I just wanna say one thing. We have to remember, even if we have to return CPA money of thirty-five thousand dollars, that's taxpayer money. The other thing I wanna say here this evening is how many times have we heard here, sitting as a council, "We need more money. We've had to have the meal stacks, 'cause we need more money." Here we are, we have an opportunity to raise approximately over a hundred thousand dollars, possibly a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the community, and there, there's enough affordable housing going in on that area. And, back, even back then, it goes back to how I believe, historically, tax title land always went to an auction with no, no restrictions. The reason it didn't go to the, at the last sale, because there was restrictions on the property. If it went on a free market, you, somebody would've grabbed it for the eighty-something thousand dollar.
Thank you. So, um, I guess that this, as we know, there will not be a vote on this tonight, but, uh, Jackie Bussow, if you would like to approach the council and just say your name and address for the record, and just, you can put your, your sense in.
Okay, thanks. I'm Jackie Bussow Pereira, thirty-nine Garfield Ave, and also a member of the East Hampton Housing Partnership. The partnership was really excited, um, that Councillor Rist and Councillor Cobb voted last night to bring this motion to council today. We know that, that, the, the RFP that went out failed, that no one actually bid on the property, and so the idea of putting it out to bid, um, as an RFP to develop four affordable homeownership units on that property seemed like a really good idea, for all the reasons that, that Councillor Rist and Councillor Cobb already mentioned. I actually don't really have a whole much, a whole lot more to say, because they have said it all. As I did mention, it, it had been the council's intention to use that parcel for affordable housing from the time that that RFP was, um, issued the first time. There are, there is thirty-five thousand dollars of CPA money, housing, affordable housing money in that property already. And this, the nice part about this, like we did on East Street, this allows the city to really be in control of what happens on that parcel. So, it allows the city to say, "Our intention is to develop four units of affordable homeownership on this parcel. If you put it out to bid to anyone, you don't know what you're gonna get." The zoning does allow for six units. You could get a for-profit developer in there who builds something that the neighborhood doesn't want. We've heard from Councillor Cobb that this is something that the neighborhood feels is appropriate for that site. Um, so, for all those reasons, and, um, it also does put it back on the tax rules, which, as we've heard, is, is something that it's been off for a very long time. So, those are my comments.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hagan.
Just, maybe this isn't for you, Jackie, I know, uh, the tax, is it taxed fully if it goes to someone like Habitat, or is there a different tax?
They would sell those parcels, so they would, if Habitat were the successful, um, developer through the RFP process, what they do is they would build the four units, and then they sell them to homeowners. So, it'd be just like anybody else buying a house, they have to pay taxes on their property.
I know with some affordable housing, there's a different tax rate. I, I didn't know if, if-
Well, it would be based on the assessed value, is my understanding of it. So, if they sell it for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a unit, it would be based on that price, is my understanding of how that works.
Okay, any additional questions for Jackie?
Not for me, but I'll, I'll add this for clarity. Difference between homeownership and owner-occupied is homeownership, I could buy the entire thing, but I don't have to live there. Owner-occupied, the individuals are actually living there and paying their mortgage. So, that was, uh, part of the, uh, why, I, the majority of the people in the neighborhood association actually thought this was a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Councillor, uh, Mayor Taznak, did you-
Just to reinforce Jackie's comment, um, it, the property would be taxable, uh, if it's held by an individual, but the tax, the value of the property would be adjusted, because it would be deed-restricted as affordable housing. So, if, if the market rate for that parcel, that, that, one of those units was two hundred and forty thousand, and, and the, the, the price limit, because it's, it's deed-restricted affordable, would be at a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, then the assessors would, would assess it at a hundred and fifty thousand, not the full value.
Mayor, I have one question for you. I mean, certainly as chief finance officer, and someone I think is pretty tight with the purse strings, are you-
CFO's down there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, used to be. X. Actually, Melissa, you can speak to this too, then. Are, are you comfortable with the sale price?
Yeah, uh, I'm comfortable with, with the council's desire to, to meet one of the goals in the master plan. If this were about maximum profitability, then I think Councillor Saikowski has got it right on the head. You can get more from the private sector, if you let them build four, six units, whatever they can stick on there, uh, but it doesn't do anything to achieve the goals of the master plan. Um, so, I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable with the council's decision on this, um, and, and I support the goals of the master plan.
Thank you. Melissa, did you want to make any comments, or are you fine with?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, uh, any other comments, as we do, as I said, we will not be voting on this, and actually, Councillor Rist brought to my attention that our city council rules say that the vote will be taken-
No, it's, it's, sorry, it's not the city council rules-
Oh, the chart, charters, again.
We have to vote on it at the special meeting, because it says that in the charter.
It says either the next scheduled or special meeting, so the November thirtieth meeting-
November thirtieth, November thirtieth meeting, we will have to vote on this.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, just wanted to let you know that.
I just wanted, I just wanted to give me a chance to use the public service announcement to the Parsons Street Coalition to see if they want to oppose us.
Thank you very much.
And maybe the taxpayers want to-
We're gonna move on now, Councillor Saikowski, thank you. Uh, Councillor Cobb, I think we still, you still have another property motion.
Uh, thank you. The next item I have, uh, before us is the request for an easement of purchased property at one oh nine Park Street. Uh, what we had here was some approachments on Manhand Rail Trail, uh, so we met jointly with the Manhand Rail Trail, who voted to approve, uh, sale of this. We have a letter to that, uh, decree that was also then, uh, zipped off to the mayor, who, uh, we also have in our packet, that was an amendment to our agenda tonight, that in, uh, has the, uh, declaration of surplus from the mayor, which puts all the pieces together, 'cause, uh, in this to actually offer this motion up tonight. The property committee did meet to consider not only just the motion for the sale, but also the minimum price and a recommendation based on input from the, uh, Manhand Rail Committee. As Mayor knows, the recommendation is not terribly binding, but we put it in here anyways, just to, uh, hope someday things will change. While that's said, I'll entertain any discussions people have on this. I'm hoping you have in your packets, uh, a diagram of the actual plot. Uh, it was surveyed, to give us some greater information than the actual request.
Okay, any other comments or questions for Councillor Cobb, Councillor Hagan?
Yeah, just, uh, in looking at the, uh, site map here, was there any history as to why, uh, a, a property was allowed to put a pool, a shed, and a garage on, on public property to begin with?
The mayor hasn't answered.
I mean, did that ever come out, I mean, in, in your hearings, or?
I, I can answer that a little bit.
Well, sorry, let me, I'm gonna just go to, if you don't mind, Mayor, if you could answer that question for us, please.
Sorry, Councillor.
That's quite all right, Mike.
We, we've actually seen a history of this, this property was owned by the, by the railroad, and apparently the railroad didn't enforce that activity very closely. Um, we have, uh, we had a parcel that was sold to Richard Belanger, uh, Belanger's Fuel, that, where they were actually on railroad property. There was the parcel directly in front of that, that houses the Beauty Nook, I think it's the name of the, the-
The staircase.
And, again, the same situation, the steps, the second egress from the, from the second floor unit exited onto what turned into city property, but it was, all of the structures were built when the rail line owned the right-of-way. were built when the rail line owned the right-of-way. And, and, and I'm guessing that we didn't, we, the cit, the town at the time, didn't do a very good job of, of proofing the building plans against the plot plan to verify that the structure was actually constructed on private property. And I suspect we'll run across a few more of these before we're done.
They were close.
Not too close.
Not even.
So, I, I, Council Psychowski, Council Cobb.
Michael's statement was factually correct for change.
No, she for change.
Got to put my zingers in it, you, Michael. It wouldn't have been enough the other way. No, but, but, but the other thing with the railroad property, growing up in this town and working in different places, a lot of the companies assumed where their sightings were, that they owned it because it was their sighting, or whatever it is, or they were paying a fee on it. Well, when the Manhan Rail Trail started down there and they found out, they didn't own that property. And you have to remember, back then, like some of our property out there on Pumware Street, the way it's laid out, all the bounds are stones all the way around it, every 10 rods laid, laid down. I mean, and it was laid out with chains. And now they got the GPS satellites, and your lines change a little bit because things are more accurate than they were years ago. So it's just one of those inequities that happen, and it's dead land up there because the land goes right over, right over the bank.
Okay, thank you. Council Hagan?
No.
Okay. Council Cobb?
A couple of quick notes. This house was built before the current zoning is in. It's zoned R15. Even with the addition of this 15-foot strip of land, it is still a non-conforming lot. It's just we're moving better, more and more towards a conforming lot. And again, this vote will require a two-thirds vote of the council in order to pass. Thank you.
Okay. So any more discussion before, Council Hagan?
Just one, one, I know I, I went to one, the, the one hearing before. How was the minimum price set, Council Cobb?
What I did was, we developed what I'll call delimeter lines, where we took a non-buildable, a non-developable parcel. The most recent one was Paul Street off of Paul Street, where the cost per acre, and we used that as part of, using a formula, basically, the ratio of the, the total square for this parcel per, per acre. What would that be? And it turns out to be the bottom line. So for a, and we had that parcel to use on the other end. On the high end, well, I actually used Parsons Street because we had a lot of current update data on that for an actual flat building lot. And that developed our delimeter lines on trying to decide where we're going to go with the minimum bid price. The committee members moved towards, because of the slope of the terrain, more towards a undevelopable section of land, and chose this price, which is a little, about halfway between the low end and the medium of that, those two delimeters.
Any additional comments before we, questions? Okay, Council Cobb, I believe you're ready for motion.
Thank you. I move that the city council authorize the offer to the mayor to take all necessary steps to execute the sale of a 2,811 square foot parcel of land, shown as parcel B on the attached survey, owned by the city of East Hampton, and I usually put this in the aka Manhan Rail Trail, adjacent to 109 Park Street, Assessor's Map 151, parcel 8B, which meets the following requirements, pending declaration of surplus from the mayor, which we now currently have tonight, the minimum bid price of $500, and a recommendation that the financial proceeds go into an account to be used for bike path maintenance, enhancements, or improvements.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, for the previous read motion concerning the 109 Park Street property. Any additional comments before a vote? Council Riss?
I know that, just for the council's information, we can recommend where the financial proceeds go. They usually go into the sale of real estate fund, but I'm hoping the mayor would consider changing his opinion on where it goes, when he can, maybe he can't, but.
It's law.
Okay. Then, at some point, we ought to give the bike path some money for all the land that they seem to be selling.
Everybody said they want to go on a budget next year.
That's all right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any additional comments? I, I mean, tomorrow, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
Thank you. That concludes my report tonight.
Thank you very much. We have no old business. We do have a couple of new business. Council Winnie, just want to move the.
Uh, yes, move the mayoral appointment of Catherine Good Schiff and Liz Provo to Appointment Subcommittee, please.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to move the appointments of Catherine Good Schiff and Liz Provo to appointments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes. Supplemental appropriation, Council Cobb?
Thank you. I have for first reading a supplemental appropriation request dated February, dated for fiscal year 2012, was dated on November 14, 2011. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $50,000. This does have the owner's approval signature on it. It's to be appropriated from certified free cash, the full amount of $50,000, to be appropriated to the highway debris cleanup account, the full amount of $50,000. The amount requested, the use for foreign purpose, to provide for rental and other direct costs associated with the removal of debris from the storm in late October.
Second, please?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, for the supplemental appropriation, move the supplemental appropriation $3,000 to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes. I'll entertain them, oh, Council.
He has to move it to public hearing tonight.
Oh, you're going to move a public hearing, too?
I think you have to.
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to make a, a motion to set a public hearing for this item, 6:15, 11:30 in our special meeting. I state that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to set a public hearing at 6:15, 6:15 at December.
November 30.
November 30th, in these chambers. Any discussion?
One comment.
Of those in, uh, Council Cobb?
I'd like to note that our certified free cash was roughly $539,000, so there's plenty left. This doesn't expend the account.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
That concludes.
Okay, at this point, I believe we can finish our business for the evening. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, a second, adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see you all on November 30. Thank you very much.
No, you won't. We have to sign, don't we?